A couple items before we start. Council President will be a few minutes late and Councilmember Bingo is on TV. He is joining us virtually.
Hello.
He's on TV. So I'm calling the Urban Experience Meeting to order. Welcome, everybody. First up on the agenda, I'm going to tell everybody, I think you've heard it a few times from Kelly, we have a really, really busy agenda. It's really tight. So I've asked Hannah Lee, who is going to help me time each presentation. I hate to do that, but we're going to do it today just so we can get everybody in. So she will be the person to let us know when time's up. So first thing I need is an approval for the June 8th minutes. Do we have a motion?
Don't move.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
All right. Minutes pass. So we go on to discussion items. I'm going to invite Steve McDonald up for about five minutes and he's going to present the June 2023 Permit Report.
Five minutes or less.
Five minutes.
Thank you, Committee Chair and members of council. We're going to be talking about year-to-date information as we always do and then through June of this year. So first up is total permit applications. Again, this is the whole widespread types of permits that we issue in addition to construction, things like trade permits and engineering permits. We are up for both the year-to-date and the June over the four-year average. Strong, strong performance going on there with our overall permits. Moving on to construction permits, again, year-to-date is up over the four-year average for year-to-date, June down slightly, nothing significant to speak of there. And then moving on to multifamily permits, again, if you look at those last three years of 2021, 22, and 23, big performance over what we had in the previous years. And so we are continuing on that path of more and more multifamily permits. The month statistics, kind of, June is an outlier of 2021. We had one project come in for the full 139 units, so that kind of changed the percentages there, but we're moving along as we should expect. Single-family residents for June, again, pretty much as we've been doing in the previous Junes with an outlier again in 2021, that was the energy code year. Everyone was trying to get their permits in before July 1st of 2021, but other than that, it was kind of sticking to that average. Total residential units broken down into the different categories. You see for June, 22 family residents were permitted, six duplex units, 18 multifamily units, and some change of use. And then that same information for year-to-date shows you that, again, multifamily has just been really significant, as well as the duplex units, year-to-date 36, and single-family residents 91. There's a later slide here we'll get to that shows you what we have in plan review. BOKA and ADUs processed, and the map that you see on this slide, someone asked last time about where the ADU waiver area is, and this is that area. And I believe those ADU waivers are in place until the end of 2024. And so we have those ADU numbers here, 46 ADUs have been issued to date, and 36 BOKA projects.
For Steve?
Yes.
Quick question.
Yeah.
Where it said up there NA on units in pre-dev for ADUs, is that because there really isn't a pre-dev for ADUs?
Yeah, ADUs are not a typical project that would go through a pre-dev process. I mean, they can if they want to. We're not going to say no, but it's usually more complicated, larger projects.
Is there, is there any way, and I know, I think we're supposed to, at some point, going to get a report on ADUs, big picture, but is there a way to just track the interest in pursuing ADUs? Is there any reasonable way to track that?
I don't know of a good way to track that, just because when people are considering it, the only way we know is when they come to us with a project or a question, and they usually don't avail themselves of that pre-dev process.
Okay.
But, you know, we can, we can take a look at that and I can work with the current planners to see if there's some way that we can, maybe upon calls or interest or something like that.
I mean, if there's, if there's a reasonable way to do it, I think that'd be great. And then the other question is, I seem to recall, and correct me if I'm wrong, that the last time we had this update, we saw units in pre-dev for BOKA was in the 300s? So has there been a big spike recently, or am I just misremembering?
You know, we're taking another look at the pre-dev numbers, and also you'll, you'll notice on here, we used to have the MFTE and pre-dev numbers, and we had, we had two different reports give us different answers. So we, we took it off this month and we'll come back next month with, you know, the right, the right answer.
Okay.
We weren't, we weren't sure about it this month, so.
Gotcha, okay.
We have a little under a minute left.
Okay. And so this slide then tells you about the projects that are currently in plan review. Again, these are very solid in that you can be very sure that the overwhelming majority of these projects, once people have submitted their, their plans and paid for this much of the activity so far, that most of these are actually going to be permitted and eventually get their, get their CFO. So the strong number there is that there's almost 1,000 multifamily residences right now that are being reviewed by our plan review people. And the other good news is that single-family residences at 114 are currently under plan review. And then the last two slides, and you have this all in your packet, are both the monthly information and the year-to-date information broken down by council district. And the last slide is the largest projects of the year, year-to-date by construction valuation, and six out of 10 of those projects are residential, which is encouraging as well. And that, that's it.
Any quick questions? Quick. Thank you, Stephen. I think you get to stay up.
You know what? Jesse Banks is going to come on.
Jesse is here and we're going to talk about the Northeast PDA request for property transfer on East Wellesley, and we've got you down for 10 minutes.
Great. Well, thank you. Good afternoon, councilmen, people. It's great to see you again, great to be in front of you again. I'm here with what is a really exciting project, I think. I think this is an opportunity for a win for the city. It's a win for the NEPDA, and it's a win for the Hilliard Neighborhood, most importantly. There's a piece of property up there, which is the subject site of this request. It's 311 Wellesley, and it has been bumbling through the foreclosure process for the better part of three or four years. Finally went through the foreclosure process in December. It failed to sell at auction. The asking rated auction was something like 6X assessed value. So the city was actually able to take possession of this site from the county after the tax foreclosure process for the amount of outstanding taxes due. And so the city now has this piece of property for which it has a significant lien on, $430,000-ish, and that number is in your packet. This is at an extraordinarily key location within the Northeast Public Development Authority. It's at the intersection of Wellesley and Market, notionally the Wellesley Market couplet. It's going to be immediately adjacent to the north-south corridor, Wellesley exit, and on an off-ramp, so it'll be very, very visible and is a real opportunity to do a catalytic project. So, per the 2016 council resolution that dictated the asset transfer process to the PDA that was passed by this body, we have submitted a request for the city to give us the piece of property, allow us to redevelop the piece of property into a mixed-use building with approximately 30 affordable housing units, it's 80 to 115 AMI, and a small amount of commercial space. Part of it can be used for NEPDA offices, the other part can be used as a commercial incubator, to be able to sort of work with neighborhood businesses, build them up, move them further up the street, start in with a new business. And all of this will have an incredibly catalytic impact on that immediate area, as well as with a few other new projects going along. So the crux of the ask is about value creation. Right now, the city has no clear path to be made whole on their $430,000 lien. What I'm proposing is that through this asset transfer process, you allow the NEPDA to develop a building. Once the building goes to sale, the city will receive a first position in the equity distribution waterfall, therefore being made whole, and then any remaining proceeds go to the NEPDA to further our efforts in the Northeast. So again, I think it's a great opportunity, and all of this is listed in your packet, but a great opportunity for the city to remove blight, to be made whole on their significant lien, to get some great new capital into the NEPDA, to help us further our mission, and really to provide some additional housing choice and business opportunity for the residents of the neighborhood. So I will leave it there. Look forward to questions.
Go ahead.
So you mentioned 30 affordable, right?
Correct.
Is that the total number of units or just?
Yeah. Unfortunately, we could go more. We're parking limited, which is frustrating, and it's always frustrating to bump into this. Unfortunately, the zoning is quite permissive with respect to parking, but banks are less permissive, and they don't like to fund projects without sufficient parking. So if there is a lender that is open to going larger and providing a parking reduction below what market would be, certainly a conversation we'd be interested in exploring.
It's interesting because we're going to be considering a parking ordinance, so Zach Sapon, maybe you could help the gentleman out with?
Yeah. Yeah, you know, and we discussed this at Plan Commission, you know, and I think it's wonderful, it's going to take municipalities taking the lead on things like that to get the banks comfortable. Banks are never going to lead on something like this, they're always going to want to follow. And so I think that's what we're running into. We are exploring different financing mechanisms, so we may sort of be able to sidestep that a little bit, but I think being on the safe side and being down the fairway is the project that I've proposed.
What's your timeline?
You know, as soon as we finish this project, which we do, Terry reminded me, we do have to go to the Real Estate Review Committee, which is scheduled on the 20th, just to review the surplusing of that property. But assuming we get through this process in relatively timely fashion, I'd like to be into design later this year and begin talking to potential development partners then or into Q1 next year.
Good. Thank you. Go ahead.
Yeah, I just, I just want to thank Jesse for all the work he has put into this, and I've seen the numbers, and they really do pencil out and would be a great benefit to the NEPDA, and as he said, it would be very catalytic. The other thing I'm very interested in, parking or less, I am very interested in also pursuing a potential collaboration with STA. I think there's a lot of potential work that's going to be happening on Wellesley that this could fit in with, and so I think there's a lot of big opportunity for the, the neighborhood and the PDA.
Perfect. Any comments, questions? Jesse, thank you so much.
Thank you all.
You've been great. You've been so available to council members to meet with, and if we had questions, and this is a great project, so thanks for all your hard work.
Thank you. I appreciate it and always available.
Thanks.
Have a great day.
Next, we're going to have a Spokane Arts update for 10 minutes, and we have Melissa And Melissa, this would be your last committee meeting with city council members, if I'm correct.
Sort of.
Sort of.
I'm like the zombie that won't die.
Okay.
I, we will be giving an ARPA update later this month, but that will primarily be by Shelley Wincup.
Okay.
Oh my gosh. What is wrong with me? I'm so sorry.
You're okay.
Eric, I'll help you. Sorry, Hannah Lee. You're okay.
Thank you. Thank you, council members. I will jump in. Thank you so much for having me. I know our time is short today. So I'm here to give our second quarter update. So firstly, new show in the Chase Gallery, as you have seen. We had a first Friday reception for that on Friday. It will be on display through the remainder of this month. And then we also have an open call right now for 2024 Chase Gallery submissions. So that call is open through August 6th. Individual artists can propose, groups of artists can propose, curators can propose a themed show. All the details are on our website in terms of how to apply, and questions can be directed to Chantel Jackson. We also have our open call open right now for our next City of Spokane poet laureate. So as you know, it's a two-year position. The poet laureate receives a very, very, very tiny stipend of $4,000 that is split over two years, and that stipend covers the cost of creating a community-wide poetry project and doing community presentations. Deadline for poet laureate submissions is August 13th, and again, any questions on that can go to Chantel. So looking ahead to October, as you know, October's National Arts and Humanities Month, so I wanted to put it on your radar to save the date for the annual Spokane Arts Awards. They will be Saturday, September 23rd at Lucky U Lounge, and we will be announcing the performers and lots more details very soon. The artwork there is by Vanessa Swenson. She does the Arts Month and Arts Awards artwork every year, and we adore her designs. She's wonderful. Also open right now are the nominations for the Arts Awards. So four different categories for those Arts Awards: leadership, inclusion, imagination, and collaboration. Anyone and everyone in the community can submit multiple nominations for each category, and again, all the details about that are on our website. So as part of our professional development work for artists and creatives, helping them figure out how to advance in their careers, become better business owners, we have rebranded our professional development series as the Creative Edge, and this is actually a series that Chantel runs, and she has been organizing the events for this. I'm presenting on it today because she is at an artist residency for the next two weeks. But this is the next event in our professional development series, is this panel on how to publish your work. So we'll be partnering with Spokane Public Library and very much looking forward to that. So I just wanted to give a couple of updates on the film industry. I think most of you know we are approaching the 30th anniversary of Benny and June, and they've added a second screening. So there are screenings on July 15th and July 16th, which means that you can go to the City Line opening, block parties, and go to Benny and June the next day. And then, as many of you know, you know, part of the work that we, Spokane Arts, have been doing in partnership with Spokane Film Project is advocating for the ongoing need for a full-time film liaison position and for pre-apprenticeship opportunities. So I just wanted to put that on your radar, that that work is ongoing, and you'll be hearing more from Spokane Film Project and Spokane Arts about those needs. And then spoiler alert, Andrew very generously agreed to let me show you a little preview. I'll let Andrew talk about the progress of the bond work, but as you know, Spokane Arts has partnered with the library to commission portable works, and to wrap, in the future, we'll be wrapping book drops and book dispensers. So this is a little sneak peek of one of the designs of a book drop. So this has not been printed and installed yet, but the design was just chosen, and the artist is Danielle Davis. And I'll skip over the next one so that Andrew can show you it. And then I also wanted to talk about the City Line celebration. So this partnership between Spokane Arts and Spokane Transit, I am so thrilled with, and I just have to personally say, I've been working on this project since, I think, November 2016 is when Carl and I first started talking about integrating art into the City Line stations. And the response, we did a year and a half of community engagement, and the response from neighborhoods so far has just been all positive about the artwork, and we're so thrilled to see the City Line launch. So on Saturday, STA will be hosting five different block parties along the City Line route. Spokane Arts will have a table at each of those block parties, and some of the artists will be there to meet community members and ask, answer questions about the artwork. So we're very much looking forward to that. And then I just wanted to show you a couple photos of a couple of stations. So this is actually Danielle Davis in the Chief Gary neighborhood, and Danielle worked with elementary school students to create their own designs, which were then hand-drawn by the students, digitally scanned by Danielle, and then incorporated into the actual station artwork. So on those bus shelters, there are little drawings by multiple elementary school students from, from kids in the Chief Gary neighborhood, which is just so special. And then these are a couple of examples of the Symphony stations. Artist is Joshua Thomas, so you can see the, the music theme for that neighborhood, and just wanted to show you a couple of those designs, and I hope that you are able to ride the City Line and get to see all of them. Those are my updates. That was fast. Questions? Yes.
Just one comment. I would love to see one of those types of wraps around our ballot drop boxes. I think that would be really cool and maybe inspiring for folks to want to drop their ballots off.
Yeah, that's a great idea. Any other questions, comments?
So I hope I see your face again. If I don't, I want to thank you for everything you've done for Spokane Arts.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
You've worked so hard. You've been such a leader, and it has been wonderful working with you. So thank you, and maybe I'll see you again, but I wanted to make sure that publicly I said thank you for all the work.
Thank you. I appreciate it. All right. Thanks, everyone.
All right. Thank you. Kelsey Pearson is going to come up from civil service, and we're going to get, Melissa left her mask. Melissa left her mask.
Oh, thanks. Just being there for a moment.
So Kelsey is going to tell us everything that's going on in civil service.
Well, maybe not everything, but good afternoon.
Well, within 10 minutes.
That's right. Good afternoon, council members. It's a pleasure to be back here. It's been a little bit longer than I was expecting, but. So today, I thought I'd spend a few minutes, since I've only got 10 minutes, just really talking about recruiting and turnover for the year so far, just sort of a pulse of where we're at in 2023 with respect to filling job vacancies and the struggle that we are, we are in with recruiting in general. So I'm just providing 22 data, just so that there's a reference as sort of where we're at. But so far this year, we've opened 74 recruitments, which maybe in the scheme of things doesn't seem like a lot, but it's really quite a bit. That is an open recruitment or promotional recruitment that includes two weeks, a minimum of two weeks of recruiting, screening applicants, scheduling and running some type of testing device, creating an eligible list, and then sending names out on an eligible list to hiring departments. So we are moving quite along at a, quite a clip. Same time last year, we were at 6 to 5. We're a little higher than last year. I think last year total, we did 175 recruitments for the year. We certainly will be ahead of that this year. I think we might get close to 200 recruitments, which is kind of mind-boggling because five years ago, 80 would have been really a lot. So we're really at a different, like, just a different place than we ever were. One thing we're really finding to be happening more often is the continuous recruitment, which is opening something, not getting enough candidates to ever really close the recruitment. It's certainly been a place we've been at with public safety positions, and that would be for uniformed and, uniform and non-uniformed. Struggling public safety, especially the police department, dispatchers, police records, law enforcement of any uniform positions, has been a struggle for quite some time. In fact, most of those positions have been open for at least five years. Not all of them, but most of them. Police officers been open continuously for, as long as I've been in civil service, we've never closed it.
Can I ask a question?
Absolutely.
What's involved in, in recruiting for those positions?
I mean, it's. It's multifaceted. So the problem with, with, let's, let's talk about commissioned officers, because that really is the, the most painful point. The process is, is pretty long, and there's, there's probably a way for us to find some places to eliminate steps, but we're also confined, confined by state civil service rules, city service rules, and just how the department is set up. The background investigation that the police department runs is quite laborious and slows the whole process down. You take a test, you apply on our website, we screen the applicants, we put you on a list, we send you to the department. And then at the department level, they interview, make conditional offers. Can't start a background process without a conditional offer. Go through the background investigation, have a final, I think maybe a final interview? I could be wrong on that one. And then they begin an academy, you know, wait for an academy to start. So there's a lot of steps involved with police. We also use a private testing agency. We use a public safety testing, which has been assistive in many ways, because you can test, you know, all over the state. You don't have to be in Spokane. They do have proctored online exams for public safety testing now. We offer multiple times a year where we're, will, civil service will pay for the test, and we'll. and will offer the test free for people. We recruit in a myriad of ways. I'm not sure all of, we've tried some new things this year. I'm not sure all of them were very successful. But I think that, you know, at least we're trying some new things and seeing what works and what doesn't. You know, there's a very limited applicant pool for law enforcement, and all agencies are vying for the same, sort of same small pool at this point. So it's tough. Police is definitely a tough one. Did you have a question?
Well, I'm just curious. Do you have a sense of, how unique are we in terms of the civil service processes that we have compared to other cities, counties across the state?
If we're talking law enforcement or public safety, we're not that unique. For everything else, we are fairly unique. The closest city I could say that sort of emulates the way we operate would be the city of Reno, which has basically the same, city of Long Beach in California, basically the same sort of. You know, there's an eligible list, and there's a testing device, and most employees are classified employees. You know, the challenge being so unique is trying to get people to understand it. And that, you know, it's hard to say, get on this list, and there might be a job sometime. It's a tough sell. You know, I think that we've struggled in the past with sort of coming up with, how do we tell our story and what are the good? You know, we have good jobs. We have good benefits. We have good wages. This is a good place to work. I think we need to do a better job of telling our story and creating that story. I just recently, in fact, last month, hired a marketing coordinator for the first time. So I'm very excited to see what work we can do. I think the days of if we open it, they will come, it used to be a thing. It really did, and those days are over. And I think understanding that recruiting is going to be a challenge for us for the foreseeable future is this is where we're at. We have to kind of get comfortable with this, that we have to reach people in a different way. We have to sell, we have to sell this place on people. So it's a challenge, but I think, you know, it's good work. And I think that we have a great team. You know, we really are one of the only departments fully staffed right now. Knock on wood. And, you know, go ahead.
One more question. And maybe this is a little bit more on the HR side, but I'd just be curious if you have a thought. Are some of our requirements, work requirements, too stringent? Should we be reducing some of those to help encourage more recruitments or just allow for more flexibility in some of the hiring?
You know, I think there are some, yes and no. I think it's very easy, when things aren't working, to say, well, let's lower our quals, or let's, we don't want, I don't think we should be doing that. I think that the listeners test, if, for example, police officer, you know, we give them, they have a great responsibility, and I don't think lowering our qualifications are sort of, not having that is a good idea.
And certainly no interest in that on the public safety side.
Right. But I do think, I think what you're speaking of is there are some parts of the civil service rules where you could look at and say, it's very limiting. We are in the middle of rule review right now, which is an every-five-year process. I've pushed it out, we've taken almost two years. We're pretty much done, and there is a lot of change. Rule review consists of six bargaining unit members, six management members. These are their rules. I think you'll probably see, once we propose this to the Civil Service Commission and they adopt, if they adopt, quite some significant changes. That should be assistive in helping management be able to interview and hire more people. But, you know, I mean, there are those that are like, well, we just don't like the rules because I want to hire whoever I want. And I understand it, but I also, it is the reason we're here, so that you don't hire your nephew, or your best friend, or your next-door neighbor, right? And that if they get, if they're hired, that they earn that through merit.
We have about a minute left.
Okay. Well, all right. I'll talk really quickly about turnover, because that really is the story of this year and last year, which is turnover is this year, or sorry, 2022, 10 and 1/2% for classified employees, the highest turnover we've ever had before 2021, which was also the highest year we had ever had. We will continue to see high turnover. Retirements are up. Voluntary termination, people just quitting, is up significantly year over year. And this is just for this year. We're losing, you know, at least 10 to 15 people on average every month. And you can see significantly, we're seeing voluntary resignations up much more than they ever were in the past. So food for thought, as since we don't have the time to be able to sort of really, you know, dive deep into that, it's an issue. It's an issue we haven't struggled with in the year, in years past. So why it's happening, it's probably not one, any one thing.
Exit interviews. Are we doing exit interviews, so we have that data?
I would love to tell you that that's something that happens. It's, that is outside of civil service. That would be an HR function. I love data, though.
Because it would be wise to at least take a look at that.
I think we certainly need to get there as to why, why we're losing so many people voluntarily.
Okay.
Yeah. Otherwise, I know we don't have very much time. Any off, you know, meeting conversations, reach out anytime. I'm happy to answer questions. Go have coffee, meet anytime to discuss anything further or more in-depth. I am a true believer in the merit system, so I'm happy to chat anytime. Any other questions or comments anybody wants before I give up the dais?
I would just follow up with what you're saying. To anybody that wants to understand and kind of dive into civil service, it is fascinating. I like it. But Kelsey's always available, and she's great to have a cup of coffee with and just get some of those questions answered. But I would be really interested in the exit interview, because I would think that would be easy data to have.
It would be lovely to have, yeah. I know our system can be confusing, especially if you've never worked with or in or around one. So yes, I really just encourage you all, if you have stuff you want to talk about, I am all ears. And I would love to have anybody assist, you know, I mean, we have big problems to solve. And I'd love people's ideas as well, as to how do we get to the next place? So thank you all for today.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Next up, Andrew Chance. We're going to get an update on Spokane Library in 10 minutes.
All right. Thank you, council, for the time today. All right. Andrew Chance, Executive Director, Spokane Public Library, here to give you an update. As you are aware, we have been really busy with our construction projects, completing three new buildings and four renovations throughout the city. And with that, lots of time and energy spent in staff getting to know new functionality and delivering on new services and meeting new expectations that we have from the community. Also adjusting to a world just coming out of the pandemic and some of the challenges that that's presented over the past year or so. So we're still working on those issues. A couple pictures of the projects that came out of the 2018 bond, of course, the refashioning and imagining of the Central Library, and expansion at Shadle, completely new facility, bookless facility at The Hive, which has been a great community asset off Sprague. Indian Trail and South Hill both renovated on the inside. A new replacement facility at Liberty Park, as well as the joint school partnership at the Shaw Middle School. So 2023 so far, I don't have circulation numbers, but I thought that this data was a little bit more interesting than book checkouts. We offer about 200 library-led classes and events per month. And since the beginning of this year, that has seen 25,000, more than 25,000 attendees to those events. That doesn't include non-sponsored library events, community members coming in, doing meetings, things like that. That is just the library-driven educational opportunities, which is pretty significant. Looking at other systems, attendance, generally for a system of our size, you would see around 8,000 or 9,000 for the year. So we're really meeting or exceeding expectations. So far this year, 13,000 meeting, study, and event space reservations from the community. In May alone, we provided over 7,000 hours of access to our spaces, which is huge. We're also offering space and special paid events, for special paid events out in the community. So to give you an idea of what some of those events would be, Spark Central's fundraiser that they hold every year, a local theater company doing a debut production of Lord of the Flies. That was back in February. Advertising Federation galas, and we're on task to deliver on four weddings later this year, too. So really providing a low-cost...
Did you say weddings?
Weddings, up on the stage on the third floor at Central. Yep. So really, that venue of having a community-minded space, we're really delivering on that. Our library visits continue to climb. We're going to surpass a million visitors this year if things keep up. Prior years, that was aspirational. We would always kind of get close. I think the closest we had was 980,000 visitors. We're probably going to meet about 1,200,000 this year. So great investment, or return on the investment on these facilities. Some nice pictures of some of the events that we've had, from naturalization ceremonies, events in our Discovery Garden at Shadle, hosting Northwest Passages with the Spokesmen, a Zine Fest, music lessons, community conversations on homelessness. You might recognize some of the faces on that picture. Hosting the Indigenous Queer Market down at Central, Coffee and Conversations. This is an event that we hold every Monday morning. Everyone is welcome. It's held at the Central Library. Oftentimes, we're having conversations with unhoused individuals, and we're giving them opportunities to journal and talk and really feel that human connection. It's been a very positive event at the Central Library, as well as our Artists in Residence program at The Hive. We have space there currently for the next, I believe, six months for the Spectrum Center. So really doing some great outreach with our LGBTQ community, as well as business education opportunities. And you'll see that business education ramp up. We're just signed an agreement with GSI to take over management of Startup Spokane. So we'll be rebranding and bringing all those resources in and leading that effort for startups throughout the city. You're probably familiar with our awesome business librarian, Mark Pond, who is just a gem for the city. Whoops. How do you go back?
Try the back arrow.
There we go. But our bond work isn't quite done. As Melissa had alluded to, we still have installation of four library kiosks throughout the city. These are, if you think of like a red box, but for library materials. So we'll be placing one at Yolks Fresh Market in southwest Spokane in the Eagle Ridge area, one at Gonzaga's Family Haven off of Foothills. We're still trying to identify a northwest location. We thought we were close with the Veterans Hospital, but that has been put on pause for now. And we have a property, the library owns a property that was purchased back in the 90s with the prior bond, that has just been sitting there. It's been on the market for about 10 years. And over the past couple years, we found out that there's a private sewer line that runs down the middle of the property, which doesn't make it the most desirable piece of land for development. So we would like to locate one of these kiosks on this land. This is what it looks like currently. The vision, this is in the Shiloh Hills neighborhood, is to actually put another facility there in the coming years that would be somewhat like The Hive. It doesn't make sense for us to put necessarily a traditional library space there, just given the proximity to other library spaces, whether it be city or county. But we do see the need for a community space in that neighborhood, and it's a neighborhood that has engaged with us in asking for something like this. So why not use what we have? So this would be down the road. But in the meantime, we do have some bond dollars that can go towards the development of the site. Yes, Mr. Kaufgar?
I'm just wondering, have you chatted with the Parks Department at all to see if there could be a kind of a collaborative outcome here as we're looking for park property in that area?
We have a little bit. I don't think it's big enough for an actual park.
Gotcha.
But yet, that is something that we have talked about in the past. So what we could do is, we can put infrastructure in this space. We can put the sidewalks in, the street trees. We can bring power, data, water, sewer connectivity to this space, but also use it for some programming and community building for the area. So what you're seeing is a conceptual design at this point. Be able to put in the parking lot. We'd have some greenhouses, as well as some raised-bed gardens, and also a dome structure that's 50 feet round, which equals about 2,000 square feet. And we'd be able to hold education and community events in this space. So it would be programmed with seating, sort of learning areas, conversation areas, and see sort of the inspiration that we're pulling from here. This is pulled from Denmark. They would use these for that very same purpose of engaging a community, also talking about sustainability. And we would pull from that inspiration and build a similar space on our property as well, with the idea of, you know, talking with the neighborhood more, seeing how the space is actually used, and developing something in out years that would be valuable to the community. So what's next? And I'm just being brief here. We're welcoming peers Spokane at the Central Library. We received grant funds to bring in mentor counselors that could help work with our population that might be experiencing mental health issues or addiction issues. See, these are peers working with the population that have also experienced the same issues. That just started, I believe, in the past two weeks. We're going to continue to work with the community in developing our services and programs. And then probably the most important thing we have on our radar is that renewal of the levy in 2024. So we'd love to be engaging with council in the coming months around what the needs are for our operating dollars.
Are you expecting a straight renewal, or will there be changes to it?
Looking at the rate would be the same. And the board will be making a recommendation this month to bring forward with council. We might look at a different time period. So right now, it's seven years. I would like for us to probably align with the school district. So maybe look at three years. That would give us enough time to really see what user needs are and what the staffing needs are over the next couple of years. We have some funds in our reserve that could help cover any sort of expansion that we need at this point, but probably no more than three years. Any questions for me?
My big concern, we've talked about just the safety of the library employees downtown. I worry every time I drive past when it's closed.
Yep. So we're going to be adding some FTEs. We have it in our, this year's budget. We just weren't exactly sure where they would be needed, but we'll be bringing an item to the board to help solidify and decrease on any sort of burnout issues, because it is a different, it is a different facility from the rest, as far as the issues that we deal with.
And they do amazing.
They are, they are amazing. Their hearts are, their hearts are there, and the effort's there as well. So I applaud the central staff, as well as all the library staff.
And thank you for working on that.
You're welcome.
Anybody else? Okay. Thank you, Andrew. So Jacoby is going to come up and give us some information on council president appointment.
Thank you, councilmember Strat.
How that's going to work.
Yeah. So as you all are aware, on June 28th, 2023, Council President Beggs formally submitted a letter of resignation to the council and to the mayor, noting that he will be vacating his position effective July 13th, 2023, at 11:00 p.m. So I put together this resolution that I filed blank, so there's nobody named in this resolution to fill the position of city council president. But it does assume that council would use its authority per the charter to elect one of your current membership to rise to that role. So the other thing to note in this is because it assumes that, it also spells out the process and timeline for replacing that council member. Applications would open up the July 18th. Immediately after that, I've been... Immediately after that, I've been working with the web team on getting a webpage up and running. I'll be sending out a media release, if that is the action that you all choose to take, to make sure that we're giving people notice that they can apply for an open council member seat. Those applications will be open from July 18th to August 4th. So that's all spelled out in the resolution. Again, I'll be working with web and with our communications team on getting the word out on that. But that is that resolution. Any questions?
Jacoby, do you expect, in that process, that we will, we will receive those applications as they come in, or will we get them all bundled at the end?
We will probably get them all bundled at the end. I would, I'll talk to the City Clerk's Office about that. They'll be receiving them on our behalf formally. You can pick up applications. You'll be able to pick up applications at My Spokane on the first floor, up in our office, or from the City Clerk's Office, or download it from the web, but they need to be returned to the City Clerk's Office. So I can work with Terry on figuring out if we can get them in on a rolling basis. Council will have the opportunity to review applications from August 4th until around the 20th. The, in, in the timeline that I've laid out in the resolution, council would hold interviews on August 24th. So in between the 4th and the 24th would be where council members could review those applications, provide their prioritized list to me of those applicants.
So, couple things. For the council president appointment, anybody who submits or wants to be considered has to give up their seat. So if Betsy Wilkerson wants to be considered, she would have to give up her seat, and you don't get it back. So that's a consideration. And for the press, who, one press person calling, saying that, is Lori Kinnear nominating herself? No, I'm not. This is a process that we go through, and we've been through it before several times. So it is a process that council selects not the person who's being nominated. So that's it.
Yeah. To be extra clear, this will remain as filed until the night that you all will consider it, and one of you will have to amend, move to amend somebody's name.
Zach, do you have a question?
Yeah, I had a question about the application period.
Yeah.
It probably depends on how many people apply, but do we usually narrow down the list and of people to interview?
Past practice was, and actually, Council President Beggs could probably speak to this, but he took prioritized lists.
So the council president decides the list in consultation with the rest of council members. When I was in charge of it, I made sure that each council member had at least one person that they cared strongly about that was in the interview panel. But we've, in the past, both when I was originally appointed in Councilmember Wilkerson, there were five to seven people that we interviewed. And I, there's well over, I mean, this was a two-year position both times, so there were well over 25 people who applied for it. This may be a smaller group, since it's only a few months.
So just to be clear, this person serves until November 28th, when the election is certified. Same thing with the council president. So you get three months if you're this person, or four months if you're council president. So this is not, you know, your big moment, so to speak.
And this will all be clear in our-
Yes.
-communication materials, but you have to have lived in the district for at least one year from the time of appointment.
And you may not hold another elected position.
That is correct.
And that time period will be on the application, too?
That's correct, yeah. There's one other thing I wanted to touch on. It escaped me.
You did want to confirm the second sponsor on it?
Yep. Councilmember Cath, or Councilmember Stratton, are you good to be a second sponsor on this?
Sure, yep.
Okay, great. The other plug I was going to make is that I had sent out an email last week asking for any modifications to the application questions that we had used in the previous round. So I'll make my plug again here. Council members, if you have anything in particular that you want included on those questions, please get back to me, ideally by tomorrow, because I'm going to get web all of this information to be posted very soon.
Makes sense. Any other questions on this topic?
Leave some of that email again.
You want to move into the 2023 Boards and Commissions update?
Yes. So we'll need to, along with the council president appointment resolution, consider some adjustments to boards and commissions with Council President Beggs leaving. I filed, or a version, a preliminary draft that Councilmember Kinnear and Councilmember Stratton are cosponsoring as well. This draft is a working draft, so there are still discussions about, you know, proposed amendments. And there will likely be some from now until next week when it's considered.
And again, this is just till, okay.
Yes, this is, these updates will be in effect for those same three months that we are pointing to.
Well, actually, even less.
Even less, yeah.
Because it'll be six weeks, and then we'll have the other council member, and then we'll get re-divvied up again.
Correct.
And then everyone can offload the segments they don't like.
All the stuff you don't want. Yeah.
Any questions on that? No?
Did you want to confirm the second sponsor on that one, too?
Councilmember Stratton?
Yep, sure. Then you're, boy, you're on here a lot. Okay, you're going to do the Sustainability Initiative Manager update?
Yes. So we went through a process over the last two months, collecting applications and interviewing candidates for our Sustainability Initiative Manager position. Per the SMC updates that council considered about a month ago, any new appointments to these positions come before the full council. I filed a version that did not have a name included, as we were still deliberating that. And I believe there's going to be a motion tonight to substitute an updated version with the, with the preferred candidate of Councilmember Kinnear.
Questions? Nope. Is that it for you, Jacoby? Okay, perfect. Thank you. Kevin Freebot, come on up. We're going to talk about Kendall Yards and West Quadrant TIF funding. Can we do it in five minutes, you think?
I think I could do it in two.
Really?
We'll see.
Oh.
You would have time, then, for the joke that you told me.
Uh-oh, no. Okay.
It was funny.
How, how does a narcissist change a light bulb?
How?
He holds on to the light bulb and waits for the world to rotate around him?
It's a great joke.
See, I collect them for, just for this, these occasions.
We're dangerous together.
All right.
Okay.
So this is a, just a very quick introduction to a upcoming funding request for the West Quadrant TIF, this time for the Kendall Yards subarea portion. So this is completely separate from the neighborhood projects that we usually speak about. We, we expect this, late this fall, early this winter, for Greenstone Homes to request a purchase and sale agreement for $750,000-ish dollars to reimburse them for the installation of public improvements within the Kendall Yards area. I've, there's a little, there's a handy little map in your briefing paper showing you kind of the general location. But it is, it's, it's specifically here, all the way at the end of Summit Parkway on the west end. So as development has progressed, it's getting closer and closer to the end of Kendall Yards to the western side. The improvements involve streets and sidewalks, curbs, stormwater drainage, basically the whole suite here. Lighting, street lighting, water sewer landscaping, and would reimburse the, them for their costs, as well as to bring those properties, those public improvements into the city's property. So they would stop being private property, and they would become city rights away. So in general, you can see kind of a messy drawing here, but this is the best I've got thus far. This is the intended and only use of the funds generated by Kendall Yards. So the city in, when it established the TIF, signed an agreement to reimburse the developer for these kinds of improvements. Generally, what happens is, is they build them. They bring in, we will inspect them to make sure that they meet our standards and our engineering standards. And then they bring in both a purchase and sale agreement and a, and a plat, which basically takes those properties out of public, out of private property and makes them public property. That's what will come to council likely in late fall, early winter, is that purchase and sale agreement. So at that time, we'll know the exact cost. We'll know which, which improvements exactly. The city has some discretion as to whether the price is appropriate or not, but generally, this is what this part of the TIF is meant for. And other than that, I'm happy to answer any questions. I just wanted to give you an introduction, since it's been quite a while since we've seen one of these.
Mr. President.
Yes, sir.
Yeah. So there hasn't been as much activity lately. I'm wondering what's the amount in the account, and whether or not there is a, any discussions with Greenstone about taking that money and using it for affordable housing in that area, since it can only be used in that area, but that is now a permissible use.
So the last time they requested reimbursement was 2015. All this time, just like with the project area, the neighborhood projects, it's been accruing the, an amount. I don't have that amount off today. I wish I did. But I will definitely have the amount when we get to the repayment level. As far as discussions with them to shift their spending to affordable housing, I'd have to look into that. We haven't initiated anything yet. There's a very specific repayment agreement that the city signed in 2007, 2008, that says that it's for these kinds of street improvements and frontage and public improvements. So we'll have to look into that, see if this is a wiggle.
I'm just wondering if we have this money, and they're not going to use it for those, that original agreement, whether we, now that the legislature has changed the rules, if we could explore that.
Now that the city has passed the amendments to the TIF, it doesn't end in 2032, assuming the county agrees to those changes. Any money that's left over would then shift into a normal project cycle where we could immediately start funding affordable housing. But if you want to fund before 2032, that I've got to do some homework on.
Okay. Well, we have lots of housing to create, so-
Yes, sir.
Thanks. You do great things, but just be open to that possibility.
It's definitely foremost in our minds. Thank you so much.
Any other questions? Kevin, thank you. Appreciate all you do.
Thank you so much. We'll see you next time.
Jen, Commerce Grant Acceptance. Can we do it in five minutes?
Hopefully last.
Thanks.
Just going to ask questions.
Okay. Good afternoon. Today, I am requesting permission to receive our SDG grant from the Department of Commerce. The majority of these funds have already been allocated through the five-year awards, which we are entering into the fifth year of those awards, and through the current eviction NOFO, which you all will see at the next committee meeting next Monday, the 17th. The next round of our HHOS grant, which will begin July 1st of 2023, sorry, I should say 2023. Oh, I'm sorry, no. The next round of our HHOS grant, which will begin in July 1st of 2024, will encapsulate the balance of these funds through an RFP, which we're hoping to have go out in fall of 2023.
Questions? Comments? Perfect. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Richard Colton, Northeast Community Center, Triplex Project Funding Change Request.
Good afternoon. As you may recall, the council approved funding for the Northeast Community Center's Triplex project as a result of our most recently closed RFP. And through due diligence and ongoing conversations with Northeast Community Center, we determined that the project ultimately was not eligible for CDBG because it contained new construction component, which is not allowed under CDBG. We did not allocate all of the 1590 funds that we had put out in this RFP, so we're requesting to shift that to be funded with 1590 funds in the amount of $300,000, same amount as they were awarded. And the project is ready to move forward pending disfunding.
So why didn't we apply for the 1590 funds?
When we entertained applications, the, the primary focus was to allocate CDBG funds quickly to get back into timeliness, compliance with HUD. So we were trying to allocate as much of our CDBG allotment as we could. We did have $3 million earmarked in 1590, and we allocated about 2.5 million of that, but we didn't allocate all of it. Where we did allocate all of the CDBG funds actually went over a little bit. So this actually reduces CDBG a little bit, which will not affect the timeliness, but would then shift it to the 1590.
Go ahead, Michael.
Just the percentages. What percentage will ultimately be CDBG, and what percentage would be from 1590?
For this project or just overall? Zero CDBG.
Okay.
It would all be 1590.
Okay. And, but I thought a, a part of the project was not new construction. It was essentially remodeling or rehabilitation.
Yes, it, it kind of evolved. So they have, they own a single-family home across from the center that is currently not occupied and needs extensive rehab. So their original proposal had rehabbing that single-family home and converting it to a triplex. Now the project is to actually build a separate triplex on that lot, and then rehab the house separately. So we would not be funding the rehab. We would be funding the new construction.
I get it. Okay.
Betsy?
And was that all clear in the original application, or did they modify the application? Because I got kind of confused as to where we didn't really catch it till we were a little bit driven down the road.
Yes. And I went back and looked at that. Originally, they were talking about attaching, physically attaching an add-on or an addition. And in their mind, physically attaching included shared green space. Well, that's not physically attaching a building. So that's where this started, the process of, hold on, we need to look at this a little bit clearer. So we requested plans and specifications, and that's where we saw that this is a separate standalone structure. I mean, the good news is, instead of just adding two, two more units to a project, we're actually adding a full three units, and then rehab, they will rehab the single-family house and make it livable again.
Affordable.
Any other questions?
Anybody? Think we're good?
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Let's see. Spencer, with an ARPA subarea planning update.
Hello. Good afternoon, councilmembers. So this is just a, a quick update on money that was set aside for subarea planning through ARPA. This was done last year. So first of all, what is a subarea plan? Just to remind everybody, a subarea plan is just a localized planning effort. What makes it special is that it's essentially an amendment to the comprehensive plan that applies to the specific area where that plan has been done. It's adopted by ordinance, and it does allow for basically a greater level of detail in that specific area compared to what the overall comprehensive plan might say about something. So you can adjust things like specific land use provisions, and you can also develop specific goals and policies for that area compared to what the overall comprehensive plan says. So last year, council allocated $1 million of ARPA money to conduct subarea planning. We identified three neighborhoods in collaboration with council, and those three neighborhoods were Hilliard, East Central, and West Central. A little bit of progress on those. So we are underway with Hilliard. We have combined the money for the subarea plan in Hilliard with EPA Brownfields grant money, and we are working with the Northeast PDA. So the, the planning work that is going on in that entire area is partially funded through this subarea planning money. And we have our consultant already engaged, and they are moving ahead. In East Central, we are still in project preparation stage, so we're mostly working to keep good relationships with the stakeholders on the ground there. And we are also seeking a Community Connectors Grant, which would come from, I believe it's Smart Growth America. And that money would be helping to supplement some of the outreach activities and to build connections, deeper connections with the community. So we see those, we see that money as potentially additive to the, the ARPA money.
But without that grant, you're, you're still able to proceed, correct?
We can still proceed with the subarea plan. This money would just give us additional-
Okay.
-resources for outreach and collaboration with the community.
I'm just a little concerned, because I've been in a couple of those meetings for the East Central Subarea Planning, and already we were discussing that that probably would not be an adequate amount to really do the subarea plan that the East Central community needs. So I understand this $70,000, but I'm a little hesitant until I know that we have that smart growth money in hand to be allocating any funds out of this pot from what the original purpose was intended.
Understood. And we'll get to the $70,000 here in another slide or two.
Just so you know.
Yeah, thank you. So we're still holding those initial discussions, just starting our outreach and kind of developing the, our ideas for preparing a scope and whatnot. West Central, we have not made as much progress in West Central as the other two, and that's in part because there are other ongoing planning, there's other ongoing planning efforts in that neighborhood. And so we're kind of letting some of those items take a firmer shape. And so, we're kind of letting some of those items take a firmer shape before we decide how to deploy the, the ARPA money for the planning effort in that neighborhood.
That makes sense. Thanks.
Okay, so this is the $70,000 that Councilmember Wilkerson referred to. So, one of the things that we have considered doing is taking about $70,000 or $75,000 of the planning money, the ARPA planning money, and applying that to updates to our multi-family code. So, you are aware that we, as a result of BOKA, we are looking at some significant changes to our lower-density zones, the single-family and two-family zone. These would be code updates that would bring us into compliance with House Bill 1110 and provide options for so-called middle housing in all of our neighborhoods. That work is already ongoing. What we are not doing as a part of that process is really taking a look at the design standards and the development standards for our multi-family housing in the zones where multi-family housing is allowed. So, this would be the residential multi-family and residential high-density zones. Our feeling is that as we are engaging in these subarea planning processes, generally, multi-family housing is a part of the conversation, and our feeling is that our current standards, design standards and development standards probably need a refresh. So, as we have that conversation with, with the community within a subarea plan, we would like to have better standards in place to give people some certainty about what kind of housing we're talking about, what are the design standards that are involved, those kinds of things. And so, our proposal would be to use a little bit of that ARPA money to fund that effort as a sort of a support for the, the subarea planning that would happen afterwards.
I would, yeah, I would just say, I'm in agreement with Councilman Wilkerson. I mean, I'm all for, for finding the funds somewhere to, to make sure this work happens, 100%. But to take it out of this pot at this particular time is, is a little bit like essentially having Northeast and East Central and West Central subsidize kind of the citywide processes that are ongoing. And, and I think these are subarea plans that we got to get, we got to get going and got to get done on. So, I would not, at this point in time, support the 70 from there, but I would support it looking elsewhere to, to find it.
Understood. So, I think what I'm hearing right now is, let's wait and see what happens with the Community Connectors grant. If that brings in some additional money that can supplement some of the subarea planning work that we're doing, then maybe there's an opportunity there.
But, but in the meantime, though, Spencer, I mean, are, the, the, the design work is really important on that, and so would that just be on pause or, because we don't?
For the multi-family standards?
Yeah, because don't we want some of that to, to kind of come alongside us making BOKA permanent?
Well, so the, the code updates for BOKA, which is, applies in our smaller, you know, single-family and the residential two-family zones, is separate from the multi-family update. So, we have four residential zones. There's single-family, two-family, multi-family, and high-density. Our BOKA update, which we are working on currently, would take care of the two-family and the single-family. Our argument is that we also really should be looking at the multi-family and the high-density at the same time, and that's what the $75,000 would, would address.
One more question?
I did. I'd like to see the footprint of the subarea plan. I know, I don't know if it's been actually being confirmed exactly what the footprint of the subarea plan was going to be in East Central or what the footprint has been identified in District 1 and District 3. So, at some point, I'd like to see an update. I think that'd be beneficial also for us going forward. So, I don't know what that looked like, Spencer, but where are we at in the process?
Yeah, we have not identified a footprint for that plan yet. That's, we're still in the very early stages of outreach, so some of that will be developed as we continue through the process.
So, have you approached WashDOT at all to ask for collaboration in East Central?
We have had discussions with WashDOT. They have not offered any money. We haven't asked for any money as far as, you know, helping with the planning efforts, but we're aware that they have work going on. They're aware that we have an interest in planning in that area as well. So, there's a desire to collaborate, but since we're still pretty early in the process, we don't know exactly what that looks like.
I would ask for money because if you don't ask, you're not going to get it. So, and they've made some promises already, so maybe we just nudge them a little bit. Like, we're involved in this, how can you help? And maybe it's not money, maybe it's people. Maybe it's, you know, folks that can do some of the work. So.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Spencer, you're the best. Thank you.
Thank you.
We appreciate you. Kevin, transportation grants. And you're the best too, Kevin.
Thank you. I was going to ask you about that.
Come on, get the trophy.
Am I in the wrong folder, maybe?
Got a trophy in there.
All right. Good afternoon, council. Kevin Pacanso, Integrated Capital Management, as we frequently do, here to brief you on an upcoming grant opportunity. This particular program is the Transportation Improvement Board. Most of you know, the TIB is a state agency, separate and independent and distinct from WashDOT. They have an annual call for projects, and that call is out for this year. Applications are due August 11th. Same requirements as previous years in terms of the local match required, and it's 20% minimum. There's two primary programs that we're eligible for and that we've submitted on in the past. The largest, the Urban Art Trail Program, about $9 million is available this year. There's not a, isn't a hard cap per se. The typical range that we might see in our region is usually no more than $2 million. You can maybe go up to $3 million, and that's just based on recent experience. And then, active transportation program as well. It used to be called the Sidewalk Program. It's been opened up to allow for both sidewalk and bike improvements or shared-use trails. Only $1.7 million, relatively small program, and the caps are on the smaller end of the range as well. First, the Urban Art Trail Program, just a little more background on that. They, TIB is kind of unique in how they do their scoring. They have four, what they call bands or categories that they evaluate your projects on. They're listed there. Safety, growth and development, mobility, and physical condition. They take whatever your highest score is from those bands, and that's what you're evaluated on. For this year, there's a minimum of two projects that we're kind of focused on submitting for this year. I'll provide you a little bit more detail, and then a list of a couple of other projects that we're considering as well. The first project is Freya Garland to Wellesley. The idea here is, there's a recent funding that came available through NEPDA for upgrade of a water line in Freya Avenue, replacing an existing water transmission main that's critical to that portion of the city. That money is, again, ARPA money coming through NEPDA. That project's going to happen regardless. The idea here is expand the scope of the project a little bit to accomplish some transportation improvements, including a little bit of pavement work, some sidewalk infill, and then a shared-use trail along the golf course frontage of the limits of work that would connect to a future trail that's planned on Garland west of Freya, that then also connects to the Children of the Sun Trail, and then our own Garland Pathway Project west of Market. So, it's kind of part of an overall network that's envisioned out there. So, in this case, one of the strategies or reasons behind targeting this project is TIB really likes being the last money in the door to a real project that's going to kind of happen regardless, that they know is going to advance and move forward. They don't like dedicating dollars to projects that are maybe going to sit and linger and maybe take some time to move forward. So, it's a strategy here to expand that scope and get some economy of scale. We'd be looking at roughly a $2 million in, in transportation improvement costs, and given the 20% match, it'd be a $1.6 million grant request. And that project is intended for 2025 construction. The second project is Riverside and Monroe, Monroe to Wall Downtown. This is a project where we, we received a, a partial grant award a few years ago for roughly 50% of the total project cost, a little bit less than that. So, again, the idea here is that, that TIB ask or request would be that final money in the door, in the door to deliver that project. And that would really be a continuation of the work that we saw just completed this last year. While we restriped this portion, we didn't do any of the pavement work or some of the utility work that's needed through there. We really just continue those street improvements that you saw completed this last year from Wall to Division, looking at roughly a $1 million grant request on that project. And then finally, there's a list of a handful of other projects that we, we've, we have and are considering. Several of these projects are, are great candidates for this program, but they may not be the right timing. So, it might be that some of these projects might be great candidates for next year. So, both Palouse Freya Roundabout, which is being, being considered at the federal level for congressionally-directed spending from McMorris Rogers. If we get that, it'd be a great strategy to come back to this program next year for the local match. Again, they like being that last money in the door to deliver a project. And then similar for Fish Lake Centennial Trail, let that project advance a little bit more in design. It might be a good candidate to supplement some of our construction funding for that particular project. So, that's it. Any questions that I can answer?
I have a slightly different issue, but since you're here, I want, we are trying, at your department's request, to get a resolution voted on tonight that would add the Leita Bridge to our legislative agenda.
Yep.
So, I wonder if you could just outline that and with, unless anyone objects, we could just, you treat this as a quick consideration. Eric Poulsen circulated it, and that way, when we vote on it, we will have at least discussed it at committee. So, if you could just tell us what?
Sure. Councilmembers Wilkerson and Zepone are well aware of this, but SRTC, a couple of years ago, started generating what they call a unified list of projects. They update that list annually. The sort of expectations have evolved a little bit from year to year. They're trying to be more purposeful in asking that the, the projects that we submit from agencies, that they're on an adopted legislative priority list. Well, the challenge with Leita, it's a new project that we asked to be added to the list this year. Our cycle usually occurs in the fall, so that timing is off a little bit. We think it's a pretty important and valuable project. You've heard me present on the past, it's a 50 to 65 million dollar project we need to be pursuing. So, we're requesting, we've already submitted the project. SRTC staff didn't want to include it because we didn't have that one little requirement that wasn't on an adopted resolution. So, if we can expedite that and get it in for this year, then it would be added to this year's list.
The deadline's Thursday, sort of.
That would be ideal. It could probably still be considered later, but it'd be preferable to have it completed before the board meeting on Thursday.
And the SRT staff told me that they've allowed City of Spokane Valley to retroactively amend their legislative agenda to do it, and that we can do the same. So, that's the background on it.
Yeah.
Should be easy. Thanks for indulging me on that.
Okay. Great. Thank you.
One more?
Just for clarity, so, so the, and I, I'm just looking at this now, so that, but the practical effect of it is just that we're, we're advocating for dollars from the state to, to get this done?
Yep. We're just adding, if we had known Leita was in the state last fall, we would have put it on our legislative agenda. We found that out later, and so we're just correcting that.
Okay.
And they really want to see the parallel support from SRTC and the city. If the city's not in support, then it doesn't carry as much weight.
Right. Great. Thank you.
Thanks, Kevin. Okay, where are we at? Responsible bidder program, is that you or is that Chris?
Yep, that is me. That is me. Yeah, so this comes out of conversations we've had with AGC and ABC and City Public Works and Procurement and some of the trade unions. A little over a year ago, we passed an update in our apprenticeship utilization ordinance. We looked at responsible bidding requirements, and after a lot of conversation, we took that out, and we roundtabled that again to see if we could figure it out better. What the proposal was a little over a year ago was that every time there was an RFP, that it would be examined through a lens of, are they actual responsible bidders by whatever criteria the city had? But there was worry that it would then become subjective, and it wouldn't just be price-dependent. So, we continued to meet, and we reached an agreement in principle, not on the details, but a responsible bidder roster, that we would do that evaluation of bidders once a year or every other year of the bidders that want to bid on city large projects and make sure that they don't have too many LNI claim investigations, wrongful withholding of wages, that they have adequate health benefits and retirement and, and basic things like that, that the legitimate contractors, whether they be union or non-union, have. And people seem to think that was a good thing. It would have more certainty for the city, it would should make it easier on staff because the people bidding on any particular RFP would already be pre-qualified. So, the city wouldn't have to go through on each one and check to see what their latest investigation status was with LNI. So, this resolution, in, in my higher aspirations, we would have finished the ordinance before I left office, but this resolution just commits the city to finishing up the process and coming up with the details, again, in conjunction with AGC, ABC, the unions, procurement. So, there's nothing mandatory about it, other than it sets a, a timeframe.
So, is there a, was there a follow-up done with utilities?
We're still talking to them, but yeah.
Any other questions? Okay. Thank you. All right, we have one item left, and I want to explain it really quickly. We're going to use this as an opportunity for just a little bit of education. We're going to do it in hopefully 10 minutes. There had been a lot of discussion in the last week or so about some changes with how CDBG funds are allocated. Historically, if I understand this correctly, our neighborhood or our community centers get a set amount of those funds. They don't have to apply for those funds. And that is in the process, that process is changing. So, what I'd like to do, and I don't want to catch anybody off guard, but Jen, could you come down and just, Jen did a really good job explaining it at the CHHS meeting last week. And what I'd like to do is just get council members, because we're going to hear more about this, so I want to make sure council members understand what the change is. And then, we had some, some of our community center folks were concerned and had questions. So, we thought, while we had everybody together, we would just bring them down and give them a minute, so we all are hearing the same thing. I appreciate it.
Yes, of course. And I brought Richard too, since he works very closely on that.
Perfect.
So, as you all know, in 2022, we had significant issues with our timeliness and spending out of CDBG funds. And through a review, some of what we saw was that some of our challenges in managing our CDBG funds was the way that we had separated out these funds into different pots that were really being kind of attached to other funding. And so, we recommended bringing those funds all back together and using a competitive bidding process. You saw a similar process with the Neighborhood Awards as well. The goal of this is not to say that we don't want to fund community centers or we don't want to fund neighborhood projects. The goal is to have a singular CDBG application that allows us to vet each application against our current consolidated plan and the goals of what we said we would accomplish and ensure that those activities are meeting the goals of that plan, and that it's very clear what the outcomes are associated with all of those pots of funding. So, that's kind of my preliminary explanation, and I'm glad to answer any questions on that.
Go ahead, Betsy.
So, so thank you for that. I guess my concern is with the community centers, that it's such a quick change, that's a significant amount of money for them to have to make up in their budgeting process. So, are we looking at at least a year lead-in time? Because if that's to happen overnight, would be a financial hardship on them.
So, the community centers, I believe, are funded all the way through June 30th of next year with their existing funding. So, it wouldn't take place until July 1st of next year, and there would be the RFP going out this fall. It's actually coinciding also with the HHOS RFP, which is where those dollars kind of were previously grouped in. So, it'll all be, all of those RFPs will happen at once, and then they will be entered into contract in July 1st of next year.
Michael?
I don't, I don't have the attachments in front of me, so I don't know if that was in the packet, but do we have dollar amounts that we kind of on an annual basis that get allocated to the community centers, so that if, if the city were to determine that we needed to make this up some other way, that we would at least know what we're, what we're talking about?
We do have those numbers. We don't have those numbers on us.
When we invite community centers up, you guys have those numbers, right? Okay.
Yeah. And, and again, the goal is not to not fund them. In fact, we, we would love to be able to have the opportunity to fund them more and to fund other community centers as well that are out, out in the Spokane area.
But just, just as a follow-up, where, where does this whole conversation stand relative to the regional authority? Because I know one of the buckets of money they have their kind of designs on is the CDBG funds. And so, I'm just curious, is that potentially another kind of piece to this that might be coming forward?
Yeah, great question. At this point, we are just proceeding as we have to because we don't have any, you know, there is no current document signed that says what the timeline looks like, so we're proceeding as though we're still going to manage those funds and do the RFPs for that, recognizing the fact that if the timeline does take place, that that regional authority could assume control over those dollars in September and make whatever changes that they want to how those funding sources are allocated.
It gets confusing.
Yes.
Anybody have questions? I'm going to invite the community, community center folks to come on up. We just have the two. Free. We just have the two, Frida?
And we did get the reference letter from Northeast.
Oh, and you've got the reference letter from Northeast?
Mm-hmm.
Dave sent that over.
Okay. And maybe we can spend just a couple minutes, few minutes, talking about the concerns and just making sure we're all aware. We usually don't do this in a committee setting, but we wanted to get everybody together, because I know that, what is it, the comment period begins July 17th.
Because I wrote a frantic email to everybody.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, all right.
I just need to say something. It's occurred to me that...
Can you, can you get a little closer to the mic?
Yes. So, it's occurred to me, in listening to all these presentations, that, you know, we're not in the loop on a lot of things that are happening. Like, when Jen was talking about the, the consolidated plan, I don't know what that is, and if we have to align with the consolidated plan, what is it? I mean, what do we have to do to align with that so that we, our funding isn't jeopardized? So, that was one question I had. I think Dave, in this one-sheet narrative, he's really kind of outlined completely what the, what the situation with community centers is. We've been around for 40 years. We serve, the big ones serve three areas, but more than one neighborhood in each area. We personally serve four areas, four neighborhoods. Frida, I, I'm not sure how many you have. Same with Dave. Mark down in Peaceful Valley does not have, I don't think he has a lot of funding coming from CDBG, if any. So, we have been able to serve so many people with so many services out of our respective community centers. I also wanted to point out that we, West Central is the first community center in the state to get one of those 24/7 kiosks. We did that a couple of years ago. So, I don't know how many people know that about us. I think that we've kind of lost connection with council and with staff on what we're all doing, how we can work better together. We haven't had a meeting with staff since Carly left. I don't know when that was. But we're kind of, you know, floundering out here. We don't know what we're supposed to be reporting on. Hi, Mike.
I, sorry to interrupt, I was just going to ask a question on the, on the funding. So, and, and if you have the numbers, I'd love to just know what those are, and you could certainly email those to us. But I guess I'm remembering, you know, in my, my neighborhood council days, and back in the, when we actually had more control at the neighborhood level, over CDBG dollars, you know, we would vote to allocate certain amounts to the community centers to do, and it would be very project-specific. So, fix an elevator, or an HVAC, or whatever it might be. Is that generally how the CDBG is used now, that you're, it's project-specific, or is it kind of like a general fund to...
It's, it's like a general, well, it, your, the answer is both. We receive operations money, $90,000 in operations money. Northeast gets $80,000 in operations.
And we get $60,000.
And that's what it's been forever, and that's before Frida even took over the, the community center down in East Central. So, nothing's been adjusted. We had, did talk to Ben years ago about a raise and adjustment, and we just couldn't get it to happen. So, we get an allocation for operations so we can pay our salaries. But we also are very grateful for the menu that comes out of all the neighborhood councils. We've gotten a ton of allocations from that. I don't know if Frida has, but we've done really well with those allocations for specific projects.
So, that's been, so, right now, and how long has it been? So, every year you get $90,000, $80,000, and $60,000? And that's been going on for how long?
It's longer than I've even been at the center.
Okay.
So, when they changed the CDBG funding process, that was like two years ago, it kind of took it out of the neighborhoods and went to a district-wide approach? Was that, am I wrong? Was that impactful on, on the monies you received?
Oh, yeah, definitely, because we, we didn't get any funding when it, when that process changed. Right before it changed, we were awarded funds for a new Rita board and to replace some windows that had bullet holes, but that was before COVID. Still, those funds hasn't, have not been allocated to us to where any of that work has been done. So, we haven't applied for capital improvements through the way it used to be allocated to each district since, yes, it's a change.
And the uniqueness?
Yeah.
Right. And we have gotten CDBG funds from a couple different neighborhood councils for a wheelchair ramp, for one thing, that we got, and help with our garage, so we could protect our cars. But we're also waiting on that $500,000 allocation that we heard about from the recovery funds, and nobody seems to know where that is. I called, I called the head of facilities, and he put me through to Patrick Stryker, who said, "We need to do an assessment before we can allocate the money." So, I'm not...
And what does that even mean?
I'm going to interrupt on that. So, the intent from the ARPA work group is that we allocated $500,000 for building improvements at each of those three, combined with a modification on the agreement that would allow for a little bit of incubator space for other agreements. So, it just needs to be an agreement, the, this, I mean, the city owns the building, so, yeah, they do need to be involved in what improvements you're going to make with the building, but it is not meant to have them control it. It is for you to say, "These are the improvements that we would use." But really, we just need an agreement, and it sounds like perhaps that's fallen through the cracks of who's going to be negotiating that agreement with you. But council has done what it needs, and I'm not sure who is your main community center liaison in administration, but that's usually, whoever you do your billing to, or anything like that, or reports to, that would be the person to talk to about that.
But we haven't been assigned anybody since Carly left.
You got the microphone?
Right? The person assigned to us was Carly and Cindy, and they're both gone. And we have not heard...
So, Patrick would be the one to talk to about that?
Patrick would.
Find out from him?
Yeah, let's talk, and maybe we can facilitate getting, because I know Kim was talking about getting Patrick and his staff kind of visiting neighborhood centers and community centers. So, let's talk, we can get that set up.
Okay.
That'd be great, because there's still confusion around facilities and the role that they play, and how support should be built.
I would say there's a lot of confusion, at least with MLK, because since we've been having HVAC issues, facility has came into the process, but I'm not sure of their role, how it works. There's been a lot of breakdown, so we've just been trying to do what community centers have done for years, and the way that I was told to do it. All of our, anything we needed went through CHHS, not facilities. I didn't even know the city had a facilities department till I had HVAC issues.
It's new.
And then, and then, you know, I met the people in, in facilities, so...
Well, they didn't, they didn't know they were supposed to be working with you either, so, to their credit. So, I think you both have discovered each other now.
Yes, we have, we have met. So, we're just trying to figure out, how does that, how does that work? What is facilities' role? Because, as Kim mentioned, a lot of dollars that we use are used for infrastructure that we get from this city to maintain those buildings. At least that's what I've been using them for, basically catch-up and trying to make the building safe for not only our programs and services, but also other tenants in the building, like SNAP and other, other nonprofits. So, it's, it's confusing to me, the role facility plays or will play, and then the funding that we receive from this, from this city to be used to maintain our, our buildings. So, I don't, I don't really know how all of that is working, is supposed to work, none of that. So, it would be good to get some clarity on facilities' role versus what is expected of us as community centers, what we are going to do with those dollars in maintaining our facilities, because I know I ran into a lot of issues with our facility. I don't know about Kim. Kim has been a strong, steady leader. She probably got great air conditioning right now, I don't know, but I'm still working on it. So, it's, it's like, how does all this work, and who is facilitating all of this for us so we know each other's role, and we're not stepping on toes, and we're not creating this, this animosity and this not-good-working relationship that, that facilities or whomever needs to have with the community centers? So, that's what I'm hoping for, is just some alignment of how things get done and how they work, so I can spend my, spend more time on developing programs and services instead of, you know, who's supposed to fix the roof?
It sounds like finding the person in the administration who is your liaison is job number one. There isn't a, there is a contract agreement that kind of is supposed to lay that out, but if you don't have someone from the administration to talk to about who's supposed to do what under the contract, that's a challenge, so. But I think Patrick, last I heard, would, would be that person, that, we don't get to determine that up here, who is your, but push for that, and, you know, just having this meeting, and there's people in the administration here in the room, I think everyone will go, "Oh, let's make sure you each have your liaison."
So, I just made myself some notes, and did you have a question, Michael?
No.
Okay. We've got Kim here, who is CHHS. We have Patrick, Neighborhood Services. So, I took some notes, and we'll step back, I'll contact, and see if we can't get a meeting together.
Great.
So, everybody knows what everybody's doing, and that's a good start, that's a first start, at least.
Yeah.
Okay?
Great, yeah, perfect, yeah.
Thank you for...
Dan.
And thank you for including us on this agenda. I know it was last minute, but, and we'd like to present more to the council and to the...
Yeah, we like to bring a fancy-dancing PowerPoint. I love PowerPoints.
I think we did it with Brian once.
Well, we, actually, I think part of the agreement, again, COVID upended everything, but is that we're supposed to have regular reports for you, for you, either at study sessions on Thursday mornings, or we have these administrative reports at council meetings on Monday for 15 minutes.
You can get those set up.
And we, Jacoby would be the person to talk to.
He won.
He's taking care of some other things, but Jacoby Byrd's schedule, we would know, and then Councilmember Kinnear isn't here, but I know, she just said this morning, "I want to hear some reports on what's going on." So, we'd love to hear from you, right at the top of the meeting on some Monday meetings coming up.
That'd be great, thank you.
We can make that happen.
Thanks for all you guys do.
Thank you.
Thank you, thanks for your support.
Thank you. Thanks for sitting through, yes, thanks for sitting through our meeting.
No, it was interesting, I learned a lot.
All right, no other business? Meeting is adjourned, and we'll see everybody back here at, is it 3:30?
3:30.
3:30. I was going to say 3:00.